Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November the 10th, 2020. You are viewing the Town of Halifax Board of Selectments meeting for this date. As is our custom, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you need everyone to join?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also want to mention that we are being recorded by Area 58, Community Access Television. This will be viewable on Community Action, uh, yes, television, on Channel 15, I believe it still is, and also will be available on YouTube at some future date as well. We're going to start with some of our usual business. Approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments? Is anyone good with it?
Not near here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Just move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Selectments minutes. For the regular session, September 22nd, 2020, and the regular session, October 1st, 2020. We'll take those first. Make a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The executive session minutes for September 3rd, 2020, October 13th, 2020, October 26th, 2020, and October 27th, 2020.
So move. Troy wasn't at the last one.
Are there any in there that you're recusing yourself for?
No, no, no. I'm just saying Troy wasn't present for that.
Yeah. Okay. So, did you move it?
I'll move it, I guess.
I'll second it.
I just didn't know, can we vote if we're not...
Troy could vote on the other ones, he just can't vote now. Troy could vote aye, but abstained from the one he didn't attend.
Okay.
So I'll just say the change to 27th, so who first and who second?
I'll move.
Okay.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Who's second?
I do. Does that leave us the 27th? Or, no, we're good?
No. Troy abstained from the 27th. That vote was 2-0, one abstention, the other ones were 3-0.
Right. Okay. Moving on.
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vindal warrant number 42 for $94,961.77. School warrant number 44 for $224,740.57. Mobile car fee, $5,160. Amnest commitment for $38,751.37.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
JP Law and Legal for September. I'll move it.
Yep.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Recuse.
I move to affirm the payments of the following selectments bill. Attorney General Lawrence Mayo, $1,875, and Michael Tepeelman Esquire for $1,848.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 43 for $380,299.66. Vindal warrant number 45 for $938,979.18. Withholding warrant number 46 for $140,371.70.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye.
I recuse from 43, but aye for 45 and 46.
And the last one is move to approve the payment of the following selectments bill. Dana Brooks and the branches legal for October, $1,560.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recuse.
I move to approve the payment of the following selectment bill dated November 10th, 2020. Selectment expense account, $128.40. Law account for purchase of items and horses, $172.10. And that's all the bills to be presented at this time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. That's it for the bills. Move on to general mail.
So, we did most of the agenda yesterday.
Correct.
We do need to get the assignments done for the inspections for the alcohol licenses. Cam, do they each have a copy?
Does anyone have any preferences? If nobody has an objection, I'd like to do Lionville and Grove 58.
I can do Mom Ponset and Happy Dragon, like last time.
They'll be the kind of thing there.
All right, I'll keep going. Halifax Mobile, I'll do that one.
For the new project, everybody said?
Yep.
Tom, if you're going to take to my house, if you want to take the unit at Flybar LLC?
Yeah, I can do that, and as long as I'm in the building over there, I might as well do Harmony 2 as well.
I'll do Lindies. What's up, Ham?
Is that the one that's not open yet, that's still under construction?
Yeah.
Is that something?
Yeah, that's the one down by Hanson.
Twin Lights Liquors is...
Yeah, he's not operating at the time.
So, last year, I didn't do the inspection of Country Club because it wasn't open.
I don't know that they're open, are they?
I don't believe they are. Okay.
I had to do it in an in-season restaurant.
So, the non, so, no, it's not a country club, you know, you guys said?
Yeah, I don't believe he's serving anything.
No likes.
No one's doing Twin Likes either.
So, again, when you open up those two, you have to make sure that they're open.
Who's doing Halifax Mobile?
I can do Mobile, I said I'd do Mobile, Happy Dragon, and in-season restaurant.
So we covered everything?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, so Troy's doing Harmony 2, is that correct? And then you should have the town...
Yeah, no, that's fine. Troy's doing Harmony 2.
Okay, so if we're done with the assignments for the alcohol licenses, we're moving on, not to the appointments we have tonight concerning abatements for recycling, but to Cam's list of...
So, behind the blue, okay, there's, um, you guys said, um, you guys have the first. We still have the fourth. So, you guys got number 1, 3, 1, 2, and you guys, you have that one.
As I have become accustomed to saying, when I first became a selectman, I was taken aside by a selectman from another town who asked me how I felt about dogs, and I didn't understand at the time what the question entailed, no pun intended there. So I just kind of dismissed it, and then I realized how ugly and awful the dog hearings were. But I have changed my mind since then. I now consider abatement hearings for recycling a far more worse project. It is incredibly difficult, unless you be consistent, you have nothing. And I understand this explanation of bills and arrivals and whatnot. It doesn't make me popular for sure, but I can't see granting an abatement on this.
So, what, considered on 23rd October?
Correct.
So, you were in the neighborhood, so they submitted that letter a lot, it made work all the time. Um, I, I, I...
And I don't say that lightly, it's just...
We send them letters out to them, letting them know, it's part of their bill, it'll be on the pitch, I understand, it's pretty extreme. Part of the bill, the fact that they want an abatement, they have to write in before October 1st, that's taken on the bill?
Yes.
I don't know what else we can do.
There's one person I both want, but that's one thing, they did not get the first bill at all, and all the bill that I received was the beantlers that came on the 23rd of October. So, so they never received the first bill, because if they did, then it would be a fall abatement. Okay, so, we did, we were trying, okay.
I just, I didn't know what MLC meant.
Oh, that's...
Usable Lead Certificate.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
My recommendation is to take these one at a time.
So we're still working on, what was the bill number, Cam?
Bill number 2, um, 208, it was 10155.
Yep.
This is really painful.
I've already beat this to death, so, I mean, I'm not going to make the motion, but I'll vote in favor of what you guys suggest.
Well, until we come up with something better, I can't see us doing anything differently.
Charlie, do you know?
I move that we can vary it.
I'll second that.
I was just going to ask, how much, I guess, what's the number of bills that we send out for the recycling program?
Approximately 3,000, yes, around 3,000.
So this, this really isn't enough to fund the whole operation, we're still going to, even if you abated 50, 50%, we have to figure out something different.
Well, that's the whole...
Long-term.
Yeah, right. Oh, absolutely. We're talking about that, and that there's not going to be sufficient funds. If you're going to run the recycling program in some fashion, some of it is going to be run off the property tax. I think it was you, and I'm not, I don't think it's a bad idea necessarily, but, you know, is that we've got four, at least three areas of expense. We've got the curbside recycling. We could fairly say to people, if you want to participate in the curbside recycling, so that, for instance, you avoid the hassle of going to the recycling center every other week, that you're going to pay 50 bucks, let's say, whatever. So, we'd have to look and make sure that that can pay for itself. The thing is, there's some sunk costs in that, in that, just as with the haulers, they have to go down every single road, even if they have only one customer. So there's a finite amount of time that a recycling driver has to take to go down every single road, the truck has to be purchased, things like that.
Beating, replaced.
We'd have to make sure whether we could pay at 50 dollars, let's say 60% of the people paid for this, okay. So that's one area. Second area is things like bulky waste and such down at the recycling center. That should pay for itself, it's fairly easy, you go down there, you pay a fee to get, whether your refrigerator, your construction debris, whatever it is, and Susan can check, make, you know, follow up and say, are we generating enough revenue? Okay. Problem areas are going to be the center itself, paying for Susan, for instance, paying for the staff that are down there. Because when I'm saying the bulky waste and such, it's literally just the items people are bringing in, not the cost of running the center.
The overhead.
So, for instance, do we say to the residents, we have these other programs, but we're going to, to make sure the recycling center is open to everybody when they need it, maybe they'll need it sometime, that we're going to pay out of property tax, rather than out of the recycling thing. You know, and work out, work those things out, and say, which things are going to pay for themselves, and which are we going to pay for property tax? And then we eliminate the need for the abatements. People either participate or they don't, if they want to participate, they pay the 50 bucks. If you want to use a recycling center, I think you have to make a judgment call about that, though, everybody's paying property tax to run it, so maybe everybody gets to use it, even if they're not doing curbside, but they've got to pay, everybody pays the same for bulky waste, or refrigerator, throwing around a mattress, whatever it is.
Which brings up more questions about availability, how many people are using it at once, the whole thing, and that's why we need to have this discussion. And I know on the agenda, we have the regional recycling question.
Well, we talked about it yesterday, in fact.
Right, right, right. I was going to say, we talked about it, and it's...
And that's, and that's, all that is, is for the communities to combine and bring their stuff to one place.
No, I understand, but that reduces costs.
Yes, one whole, yeah, right.
As opposed to where we're sending it to a tipping station now.
Yep.
Again, the whole program needs to be revamped, we have to come up with a better solution. This whole thing is not going to work, it's not going to be sustainable, and all it does is make everybody angry. Not everybody, but way too many people angry.
How many people get the abatement bill on time? Do you have any idea?
I don't have a spreadsheet, I can get that if you want.
Probably about 200 to 300.
But that number sounds above, right?
Yeah, it sounds above.
Is that even on time?
Yeah.
Um, probably, I, um, well, 200, oh, 200. I'll have the, I look at the phone like, sorry, I don't listen, when they came in, but they gave us, you see that, that one, so we have the problem, yeah, but I think I got that.
Okay. Exactly. Well, at the moment, we have a motion on the floor, we should take a vote. All those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we second that?
Yes.
I didn't second that.
I do.
Okay, okay. All right, let's go to, um, we told you, um, 2604. We had a couple of these addresses in the past, um, in New Year, but, you guys said the, um, maybe you guys said a part of how, so, he's not familiar with it.
So can you walk through what this one is?
So, he pulled on the muscle on 14th, and the bill wasn't generated yet, so even if they told him this was a bill, it wouldn't have been on in the bill, because it wasn't...
It wasn't owed yet.
Right.
Correct, exactly.
No, this, this person sold the house, correct?
No, he's the, he's the...
He's the new buyer?
Yes, he's the buyer, so then...
So August 14th, he buys it. It may not have gone into the database, probably, for when the bills were issued on or about September 1st. So it would have gone to the former owner at that time.
Right. So he didn't get the bill, as you're saying.
Correct. And we probably can verify, we could verify with Holly as to, for this particular address, where did the bill go to?
I think we need to do that. Because typically, whenever possible, we like to downstairs, as soon as they're notified of a change.
So, Tom, what is the typical, so when somebody purchases a new home, what's the typical process for the assessors to get the updated information to give to the town?
When they get the information from the registry of deeds, when it's recorded, they typically will inform the town that there's been a transaction. Although I think, if there's a rule, the people downstairs tend to check the registry fairly often, even prior to getting something from, because it's so easily accessible now. Years ago, you couldn't access the registry, but now it's, it's there for, especially for a town, we have an account. So, typically, the, the names may change, but the address doesn't.
Well, the residentially address, but the mailing address may...
Yeah, I mean, it could have been forwarded, right? And, no, I'm not discounting that, but to your point, we should at least look to see when the, if there was an address change, when that happened.
So you want to move this one to the next?
Yeah, I think we should hold off until the next meeting, and we can do a little investigating.
Okay. You've got a 725?
How you doing?
Good. Hi there.
Where are you? Is there a...
Oh, the mic, yeah, yeah.
Mike, first?
Yes.
How you doing? Mike, it's 710, you counted?
Hi.
Um, we got a denial on the second, we've seen it came in, but we dropped off, the person here on the first, so, I'm here.
Okay. Um, I read the documents, and I, I don't know if you caught my earlier comment about how much I hate, or, I think that's pretty unanimous for all of us.
What's that?
I don't know if you've caught my previous comments about how disturbing and how much we dislike the whole recycling thing, it's really become a monster.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah. I was commenting that when I first came on, everybody was telling us how bad the dog hearings were, and dog hearings are bad, and this is worse. I'd rather have a dog hearing.
Yep.
The problem for me is, is being consistent, because if you're not consistent, then you open the door for years back, in terms of people being upset, wanting changes, or reimbursements, or abatements, or what have you. My understanding is, typically how it works here, and I'm not saying anybody's lying, or not being truthful, or anything like that, there's none of that going on, if something comes in during the day, it has been the longstanding operation that the next day, at the first mailing collection, anything that's in there at the 7 o'clock, or just after 7 o'clock in the morning, gets stamped for the previous day.
Yeah.
Whether it was that morning or not, it's still considered the previous day, because obviously we're not monitoring it 24/7 to see when somebody drops something off. My understanding is that the abatement form was stamped for the, was it the second? Is that?
27th, and I have the envelope here.
Which makes sense, if we drop it off at some point in the afternoon on Friday, it doesn't get, oh, sorry, the first, it doesn't get picked up by you until the next day.
Yeah, and what we would do, at least this has been what has been going on for years, at least that I'm aware of, is that the employees would stamp it for the previous day. So if it did come in on Friday, typically, we would expect that the next morning, anything that they collected, the first collection, would be stamped in for the day prior.
Okay.
So, I, my understanding is that this envelope was stamped the second, is that...
It's stamped the second, it's opened the second, it could have came, I don't, that's what we're looking for, the second. Um, here you go.
What, I mean, all things being equal on this end, again, I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
Yeah, I mean, look, I've had documentation of things that we were communicating with people, saying, you're on our way to drop it off on the first, right, we dropped it off on the first, if it was not opened, and if it was not processed until the second, then we did it, but, uh, let's hear it first.
Well, even if it was collected on the, on the second, it should have been stamped the first.
Good, good, that's right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm on the loss.
Yeah, you're, I mean, I get you on the, I'm shocked here, right? Okay, I honestly can't believe we're here talking about this.
I, I, trust me, I get it, because I don't want to be talking about it either.
I was walking up the door, and I can't believe I'm walking through town, driving the town hall, and I had some discussion.
About this?
But I'm going to, yeah, it did, we did it, we drove it in person, the reason we drove it in person, it's because we wanted to, we dropped it in Dropbox, it's been three days, we had a kid that had called, that we didn't leave, three minutes, so we put it in Dropbox instead of walking with our hands, it's 50 bucks, right? To me, it's not worth 50 bucks, it's that we did this, we did it for a reason, we did it in specific fashion to make sure that it's on, and, and here we are, members are here, so, normally, I probably would have just said, you know, forget it, trying to tell me I have to do it correctly, and that's not...
I get it, I'd be sitting there too.
Yeah.
I haven't spoken to the people in the collective's office who typically handle the mail, I mean, I don't have a problem doing that.
I mean, I actually, and I'm not going to remember October 1st, there was a letter from me to the, to me, I was on the way to that thing.
Well, I could, I was only thinking in terms of reinforcing what the procedure is, and does it ever not work that way, or something on that fashion? Because short of that, it would be tough.
Look, all I can tell you is that I've got, I've been... Look, all I can tell you is that I've got, I've got big printout that, that says to people on the course at noon, that we're on our way to the town hall, and we're gonna drop something off. Seeing it from Charlie, reminding the whole town on the 30th, to drop things off, that we commented on, saying, hey, thanks for the reminder, we'll be there tomorrow. I have all that, actually, I have printed, I didn't really think I would have printed the printout, but, for whatever reason, we did that, um...
That, that wouldn't hurt, I know it sounds ridiculous. I, I trust you, I know it sounds ridiculous, but...
I, I mean, look, the fact that we could delay this, and, and have any more time spent on 50 bucks, for me, is actually concerning as well, you know? Um, it was here, you know, that's, that's the only way I could say it, you know?
Our only issue is trying to be consistent.
I understand. Are there other folks that have said it was here on the first?
Well, not necessarily the first, but they got it in on time, or they got there too late, they didn't get it in the mail, I, you know, there's...
Yeah. Uh, and, and I guess my weakness is, this is for a recycling service, that there's still, what, six plus months left on the service, that I know we used the first six months, I'm not going to use the next six months. It's not like we're talking about 2019's service that I didn't pay for, and, and had an opportunity to utilize it, right? So, I guess I make, I've done this with a lot of other towns, and I've never had one where you get a fee, and then you happen to get the food on these, with the count of first week, um...
That was an attempt to keep it out of the tax rate.
I understand.
And, and I, I don't know if you caught any of the conversation earlier, this whole thing's getting somewhat dysfunctional, so, so we have to come up with a new plan, or at least handle it differently. I'm not sure what that's gonna be, but it's not working as it is now. I mean, it's working, but there's so much controversy, and so many issues surrounding it, that it's becoming ridiculously time consuming.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, last year, right, since I've been with the town just under, just under two years, last year, it's great, right? Because I didn't even understand how the whole payment thing worked, and all of a sudden, the same thing, and whatever, a week, or a month, or however late, it came back to that, and I don't know how, uh, we paid it. This time, I already thought of it, I'll actually perfectly get it there, oh, if you know, if you're bringing it first, or dropped off, and then get the, you know, again, the reason we did it was to make sure, we drove here, we shipped here on time, and then get the things, and you didn't get it on time. You didn't get it, right? And, and, and other folks that, that, in fact, the conversation I've heard of, with another number of towns, who said, people heading out to drop this thing off, you know, we'll track them later, and they said, good luck, I've done this before, I came back to that, every time. Then that came back two weeks later. You know, alright, I guess it does.
Yeah. Again, trying, in an effort to be consistent, um, I, I, to be fair, I'd probably like to speak to the folks and see if this has been a problem in the past, does anybody think that something might have gotten date stamping correctly, or, or, you know, if it, if it happens, or, or, or something in that order? Just to try to be fair to you.
Yeah, no, I, hey, uh, again, it's 50 bucks, I understand consistency, please, it's, it's frustrating, you sit here, and you go out, you weigh yourself, and it's here, and then, right? And then the actions, you know, something happens all the way, the boxes get checked, the stamp is used incorrectly, it's happened, and, and, and it gets pushed the next day. If you, by the way, if you're on the 8th, I don't mind, but...
Yeah, right.
If you're on the 7th, it's a little bit hard, I, I get it, you're going, you know, so, so, you know, so, you know, but, the everyday is here, and, um, all I do is like it here, the reason why I'm here, the reason why we did it, when we did it, with insurance here, um...
I, I, like I said, it's not that I don't believe you.
Okay.
All right. Scott, do you want to give the papers?
Yeah, absolutely, so this is the, the papers from Charlie, kind of stating, Dave, thanks for the, you know, where we commented, Dave, thanks for the reminder, for here, and here's a conversation from October 1st at noon, where we were, we were commenting to other folks, that they were heading out, and heading down the town hall, dropping it off, and, so...
Can we hold on to this?
Yeah, yeah, take it. I mean, I, you know, to be honest with you, it would be, I didn't believe that that conversation came that useful, was, we talked to my wife, and the projection came back, it's like, I actually sent a message to somebody, and they were heading there to do it, five days before I left the house, I don't know. Okay? I think my first question was, sure, is that the first? Yeah, well, sure, there, here's the message, it's, it's safe to go.
Well, the program has been in play for several years now, and the reason that we have recycling is because the state demanded that we have to recycle goods, that's when we're going through the whole process. And at the time, the town voted to help the recycling program, it was done. But I think it's, like, Tom, I think it's all built to usefulness at this point, if we get 3,000 people that are using a drop-in service, 3,000 of those goes out. I, I, like, Tom, I'd like to wait and find out what went on downstairs, because there are people involved up in on the 25th, 26th, 27th, you know, and it's trying to be fair, or my model is fair, firm, and consistent.
Yeah.
Trying to be that way.
Yeah, and, and this, this is what you said about 25th, 26th, 4,000, isn't it?
Some people have brought it in, I go, on those dates.
Right, they've brought it in earlier, you're saying?
No, late.
Oh, probably not, oh, yeah, yeah. That's all.
Yeah, also, that, that's, that's almost a given, but your case is something unique.
Yeah, and, and look, the deadline that it says is October 1st, right? It's at noon, it's a, yeah, right, it says October 1st. You did a good job of doing that, right? Uh, and to your point, I know that's supposed to get processed the next day, as the previous day.
Yeah, it may not have happened.
Yeah, and it's out only on the first, because every day is, is, you know, what's, what's the deal with that, and how, how consistent, does that follow, um, you know, the structure that's what P B did to do that, um, you know, so, again, it's, it's not worth 50 bucks, that we're not able to do it.
Yeah, I understand, but it's, it's not necessarily the 50 bucks, sometimes it's the principle of the whole thing.
Yeah.
I, I get it. And, and, nobody's unsympathetic, do we?
Yeah, I understand. So, what can I expect, I hear, you hear something bad, and what's that usually looked like?
Um, are we meeting on Thursday?
No, no.
No.
So next Monday, the board's gonna meet again next Monday, and my hope is, they'll have the information they need, and they'll be able to make a decision that afternoon.
Okay, or what, we can get something in the mail, we'll, we'll send it out?
There are a few followers, sir.
For her.
We'll let you.
Alright, sounds good?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, you gotta go to the...
Yes, we appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we have one more?
No, the, oh, well, you have, still stuck with Pam.
No, that's what I meant, one more. Yeah, there's something I didn't understand here. The, the bills have all been paid? What, what is happening?
Caden was getting a contact a couple of weeks ago, stating that the house is paid in 18 years. Um, I sent him the date, and sent him the mail, he filled out Caden, he dropped it off, and he also paid the bills. Um, and when I, yeah, but the house is, it was sold, it was alone. Um, and he's seen it a couple of times, but, and, and it seems very, 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 very new, but, but the house is...
Is the water turned off?
Yes, well, the water.
I'm seeing these electric bills, are they, are they... Those are several months in a row, I, I mean...
Maybe, 2018, 2000, October of 2018, and Caden, not on, um, November 2018, December 8th, 2000. Um, November 2016, December 2016.
So it's various examples of bills during this time span.
Okay, I just was making sure that it was spread out over some time.
Yeah, it, it was, because it's got 13, 14...
And he's, he's never applied for an abate, correct?
No.
In any of those years? And, and when did this request come? On the 5th. That's the house sometimes. Yeah. That definitely doesn't... I'm at a loss, and this goes back so far, I might, I might be bouncing around for the names from, from, you know, like, maybe go back, it's... Tom, this is, this is the house, Donald Thompson, so...
Oh, yeah, I know it. I don't know. What's everybody's thought of this?
I, it does, it does...
I've seen people living worse, but I don't, like, you know, I don't know.
I mean, the, the barn and back definitely looks like it's in rough shape, but, so...
I mean, even, even a small electric bill denotes something's wrong.
That's the south side, right?
Even if it was, yeah.
It, he paid them all?
He did.
Is it, you think it was because it wasn't living in the house, or?
No, it does, it's living in town, it's not, it wasn't living in the house, it was in town.
So they're, they're for 20...
He never received the bills?
But you said he had well, well, right?
Yeah.
So it's from all the way back, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21?
I mean, he received the bills, right? He didn't say he didn't receive it, correct? Or as far as you know?
Yeah, I think he received the ones on the street, even when he was sent out there.
But, I mean, it's a lot of years in a row not to get the bill.
Okay, I don't know if he received them each year, I didn't get that one.
Was there anyone living in that house?
He said that no one in the house. No one has lived in the house 15 years. I never used a recycling program.
I mean, we've given abatements for abandoned houses before, at least I think we have.
Hmm?
Yeah.
So I know I'm gonna take the opposite side of the spectrum on this one, but we haven't given, we haven't given anybody else an abate that got it in late, and that's been the policy of the board, so...
He's not really been late, he's been absent for a couple of years.
He's apparently getting bills, the electric bills and whatnot, I mean, the bill had to have come, maybe they weren't aware of the fact they could abate them, uh, but I think we indicate that with the mailing.
Well, if he, if, if he lived in a town, and he paid taxes on the house, they, they would have had to save his health somehow, we would have gone to that price.
Yeah.
Cause if he's up to date on it, on the traffic taxes, why, why would this one, the electric?
I, I, again, I don't think we have a whole lot of options here.
I would move that we denied it at the town. What's that might say?
I, I, I agree. I'll second that, I guess. All those in favor?
Aye.
With regret.
Pam, you have another one after that, I believe? Bill 2604, or did you already do that?
That one, uh, we table till next, I mean, here.
The only other thing I believe I have, just, um, for the board to act on, is contract with the Center for Living and Working, which is the firm that will be doing the ADA self-evaluation, uh, next year. Sorry? I believe there's room for one signature, so if the board, we funded this several years ago, that's how me, so we do have the money.
I've moved a lot of the chair aside.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or you authorize me to sign, I guess, so, looking for my signature. Throw it at me there. So if the board would re-vote and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town?
Some moved.
Second.
Troy, Troy seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We rescinded earlier, we were voting.
Some moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We rescinded the previous vote.
I, I, I think I moved each one.
That's all I got. Everything else, I believe. Yeah, we're gonna wait on, you know, have these things all be in the agenda at this point. I say, we'll do it on Monday.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, good night.